Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the April 6th meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. It's nice to see so many people with us tonight. I had invited some representatives from the Islamic community of Tampa for the invocation tonight in honor of Ramadan, but I don't see them here. Okay. Well, in the meantime, I'll remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices. Sometimes we're the worst offenders, so I'll make sure that ours are off. No sign of them, Madam Clerk?
Someone's coming up to walk.
Okay. If you would then, please rise and join me in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask your blessing upon our meeting tonight as we come together as a free people engaged in self-government. Help us to remember the values our country was founded on and always fiercely defend and promote liberty, freedom, and justice for all. Lord, give us wisdom tonight, open our minds, open our hearts, grant us the gift of wisdom as we engage in the process of governing our city. Grant us compassion and always help us to remember those less fortunate than us and to keep our mind always on the common good. We ask all of this as one community united in purpose and dedicated to the cause of freedom. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. So again, welcome. It's good to see everybody here tonight. Our first item of business is a proclamation for National Library Week. I see we have some of our library staff here, Shannon Long. Shannon, you want to join us at the podium? Welcome. It's good to see you tonight.
Good to see you, too.
Good. So, whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds can come together and learn, and whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, libraries offer members of the community a welcoming space and opportunities to explore new passions through technology, programs, and services, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve. Libraries and librarians work to create an equitable society by providing free access to accurate information. Whereas libraries are a resource for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, and others by offering services and educational programming that transform lives and strengthen communities. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 4th through 10th, 2021, as National Library Week. Thank you for joining us, Shannon. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. On behalf of Leisure Services and the library, I would like to thank City Council and the mayor for proclaiming this week to be National Library Week. Libraries provide essential resources and services that are vital to a thriving community, and libraries have been especially important this past year, providing up-to-date information and PPE to the public during the pandemic. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Shannon, and you're absolutely right about the library being vital. That it's always important and always appreciated, but it really came to light when we had to close the library for a short period of time, and, boy, the community felt that they missed the library a lot. So...
Thank you.
Next item of business is a presentation concerning Temple Terrace Off-Road Project, the Swamp Mountain Bike Club Incorporated, and we have Shane Richardson, President of the Swamp Mountain Bike Club, to present. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, guys. How's everybody doing this evening?
Good.
I'm Shane Richardson, the President of Swamp Mountain Bike Club. We are a 501(c)(3) that does a lot of advocacy and volunteer work in various counties, including Hillsborough County and then all the way up to Hernando County, and we maintain over 120 miles of off-road natural surface recreation trails, including all of the off-road offerings, multi-use offerings at Flatwoods Wilderness up off Morris Bridge in Bruceby Downs. We have had quite a few people in the community in the area who have reached out to us and asked us if we would be willing to advocate to be able to expand natural surface trail recreation potentially here in the city of Temple Terrace. And one of the things, you know, we've been active in the community and have put over 4,500 volunteer hours a year into maintaining trail access for all different types of user groups, not just mountain biking. Over at Flatwoods Wilderness and up at Croom, up in Brooksville, we work with, you know, various user groups to be able to provide those type of recreation opportunities for the community. And we have a lot of respect for what we do when it comes to sustainable natural surface trail recreation access expansion and building. And the next thing, if you notice the first slide that we pulled up, kind of gives you some picture of what, a little bit of what the community looks like. And, you know, we are a very large and diverse group of volunteers and also professionals in the community that try to work with various groups and agencies to expand natural surface trail recreation. We are currently, in the last two and a half years, working with the Hillsborough County Greenway Committee to be able to expand those opportunities throughout Hillsborough County in various ways and working with other user groups to do so as well. Next slide, please. Go to the right. There we go. There we go. Okay. So, when I, we had some folks approach us about advocacy for this type of recreation in the city of Temple Terrace. The particular property that is on the screen now, which is the Riverfront Preserve property, came up for discussion. Initially, we contacted staff to talk to them about being able to go out there and explore the property, to see what the potential looked like, to see what things existing, what it looked like there as well. And in the red, you see marked, that is the footpath that is at the preserve at the moment, that we were able to walk and track through GPS. And then, of course, the yellow lines were, or the yellow arrows were some optional areas to be able to stay away from the footpaths to be able to create an off-road cycling opportunity for folks that live in the area. And this was the original idea, kind of, you know, kind of concept that we sent to staff and talked to staff about on several occasions. We did have a professional trail builder that knows all about dealing with natural surface trail building here in the state of Florida. And not only does he work with and his company works with, but also Swamp Mountain Bike Club also works with various state agencies to make sure that this type of recreation is done in a sustainable way. We work with DEP, Forestry, Hillsborough County, and Pasco County, and Hernando County, and SWIFTMUD to be able to provide a natural surface trail recreation opportunity, primarily mountain biking. The next slide shows a concept, kind of a very rough concept, idea of where potential single-track for off-road cycling would be included. If you look at the red in the map, that red is the footpath that is already existing, and the purple line and path into that area is where potentially single-track would be most beneficial to be able to do in a sustainable way. There would only be one or two trail crossings with this particular build-out, and those trail crossings would be very well-marked so that people would understand the difference between footpath and designated footpath and designated off-road cycling path. And we would also, you know, not just implement signage and so forth there, but we would also bring to the table volunteer work to be able to help maintain the footpaths that are already existing. Our trail crew that we have at Flatwoods Wilderness has already been out to the property with permission from staff to be able to do some trail work on the footpaths that are already existing, to be able to clear debris and be able to clear out some down trees that were back there and so forth. And so, we've been out there on several occasions and have talked to staff about it. Again, like I have said, to be able to determine whether or not this would be something that would be feasible, and that's what brings me here tonight, is to be able to have you all discuss whether that is something that would be appropriate to move forward with in the city of Temple Terrace. This is in a slide of examples of already existing trail that we would be able to kind of use as an example of what the single-track would look like. So this is very similar to what is out there already in the footpath, albeit the footpath is considerably thinner because it hasn't been maintained on a regular basis. However, we strive to be able to maintain single-track at no wider, the actual tread print of the path, no wider than two feet. The overall impact of the actual trail just depends on the layout of the topography. We try to do our very best to make sure that all native plants, plant species, and animals are respected and built around and also mitigated in their impact to those as well. And then we also work with various agencies at the other properties that we help to maintain for invasive species removal. So this is a picture of the part of the property that has a pavilion on the backside of the property. We actually have contacted USF Engineering Department and have started initial talks with them that if we're able to be able to move forward with this in the city of Temple Terrace, that they would be interested in helping us revamp this area and be able to update this pavilion area, be able to remove the graffiti and so forth that's there. And also, the area includes the potential to have a small skills course for kids to be able to learn how to properly ride their bikes on off-road trails. This is pictures from over at Starkey Wilderness Park. This is what they call the gnome zone, and this whole little area is about the, it would fit into the size of where that pavilion area is, and has features in it that are amicable to teaching kids how to ride responsibly and safely through natural surface trails on their bikes. So this is kind of what we, kind of the phase layout of what we had envisioned. The Phase 1 was to be able to start to help clean up walking trails and assess multi-use potential in the preserve, which we have done so already, and then also to determine best routes for multi-use and off-road cycling, specific routes. And we've also brought in a professional trail builder with a professional trail building company to be able to assess the property for its feasibility, also looking at various elements of sustainability to be able to make that happen. And then also, Phase 3, Phase 2 would be to actually go out and flag and GPS and do a walkthrough with staff to actually have a detailed build-out plan. So this is not a night where we get to permission to actually build. This is a night where we get permission, hopefully, to be able to move forward with presenting a detailed build-out plan to staff to get their feedback and to see if it would be feasible for this property. And then, of course, Phase 3 would be to implement that detailed build-out plan. And the next slide after this will show that detailed build-out plan process that we go through. So before I actually get into this here, I want to mention that when it comes to being able to implement this for the city of Temple Terrace, our organization is also very well-versed at being able to obtain grant money and fundraising to be able to build out natural surface trail recreation projects for the community. So, you know, we really try to work with various agencies to provide as little impact or no impact as possible to overall budgets for various agencies to be able to provide, you know, that type of recreation for the community. So this next slide, this is an organization-wide approval process that we have to go through with all of the land managers that we deal with currently, and it's an 11-step process. It's pretty lengthy. And it goes through a lot of the things that we have already, I've already mentioned, about flagging, walking, GPS-ing, surveying the area, you know, making sure that if there are any native species like gopher tortoises and so forth, that they're marked, and then those are taken into consideration as well. And so, this 11-step process has to be done from start to finish in order for us to be able to move forward with anything. And all, one of the main important things about this process is that it allows land manager feedback throughout the entire process and including during the build-out process for projects as well. So it's going, it would be a collaborative effort to work with staff and folks from the community to be able to do it in an appropriate way, in a sustainable way for the property. And also, something to mention, too, is that this property is not meant to be a destination mountain bike property like Alify River State Park, or Bombay at Scrub Preserve, or Santos, or Croom. This is meant to help to expand natural surface trail recreation in the area, but also to provide a stopgap, you know, for folks that do travel to those areas, you know, over an hour away to be able to bike those areas, to provide more natural surface trail, you know, opportunity in their own area that they live. So this 11-step process has been sent already, already sent over to staff, and this process is followed nationwide by various land management agencies, including the state of Florida. It's modified for us, for our organization to be included in that as well, but a lot of the steps that are involved with being able to gain approval and do that, and actually do a detailed build-out plan and make sure that things are done sustainably, follows all of those guidelines. So something that's very important for us and, you know, for us to mention to the community is that we wholeheartedly follow a set of recommendations and standards by International Mountain Bike Association, which is the largest mountain bike association in the world. They have come up with a set of basic standards and tenets to follow when it comes to expanding natural surface trail recreation, primarily for off-road cycling purposes. So that is something that we have implemented club-wide, and those trail building practices, sustainable trail building practices from EMBA are implemented on a consistent basis throughout the properties that we are involved with at the moment. So one of the, another thing that I wanted to talk about is even though this is not going to be a destination trail system for the city of Temple Terrace and the people that live in the surrounding area, there is positive economic impact from improving and offering natural surface trail recreation in your area. And this is something from the state of Florida that was done a couple of years ago by Office of Greenways and Trails. And natural surface trail recreation in the state of Florida brings in, you know, quite a few billion-dollar, it's quite a few billion-dollar, you know, a year venture for the state of Florida. And a lot of, there's a lot of natural surface trail projects that are happening all over the state of Florida and also paved projects as well. And going back to the Hillsborough County Greenway Committee, that is something that we have fervently worked on them with also, to be able to find ways to be able to provide connections, not just for transportation, alternative transportation corridors, but also for connections for recreational purposes as well that are on natural surface trails. So that is something to note, is that, you know, any time that you expand natural surface trail recreation potential in an area, there is a long-term, not necessarily short-term, but a long-term economic benefit for that area when it comes to people coming in from, you know, spending more money at restaurants and coming to stay in hotels and so forth, and direct, also, direct health benefits from people being able to have various forms of outdoor recreation at their disposal. And in summary, I just wanted to say that our mission is to inspire adventure, build and maintain sustainable trails, and strengthen community through mountain biking. And, you know, our hope is, is that we'd be able to work with City Council, folks from the community, and also staff to be able to provide a natural surface trail recreation opportunity in the city of Temple Terrace. Thank you, guys, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Stevenson, any staff comments on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think that Mike Hagwood and Carl Langford have been working on this for some time. We really wanted to bring this to council as a potential use for this property. We do think that it'd be a good use for the property. Low impact, but certainly something that we don't have. So what we're looking for is just kind of a nod from council so that we can start moving forward and having some specific conversations with the Swamp Club, because we really haven't.
Okay, so tonight's just a temperature check of council before you move forward, and then assuming the temperature's fine, you'll move forward, Mr. Langford, and work this down the funnel a little bit and bring this back before us for approval? Is that how that was?
You know what? We can do that. We can, you know, some of the guidelines that, obviously, liability is one of those things that I need to look into, so on and so forth. So there are some questions that I do need to pass by, in fact, legal, to get her involved as far as this is concerned. So what I would propose we do is to maybe have staff kind of work on a plan, some scheduling, some phasing time, to kind of give council a little bit better idea of what would be entailed here, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. I think the important part of the question that I think we need to clarify is will this come back before council for final approval, or is this something that...
I think, I think we should, bring it back to council with a little bit more detail on operations.
Okay, very good. Counsel, what's the temperature?
A thumbs up for me.
I have specific questions that I can share with the city manager and Carl and that, the kind of things that I'm going to want to know going in the future, okay? We can do that often, we don't do it here necessarily, but...
Well, it's up to you. If they're...
Well, I mean, I have concerns. I'll do 30 seconds. You know, what kind of parking implications is it going to be? Granted, it's not a destination site, but what would be a normal usage pattern, you know, or how many people would be there? Do we have the parking to handle it? Is it going to create any kind of infrastructure issues on 78th Street, this type of thing? There was a determined land manager. Who would be the land manager? Would it be the city? Would it be their organization? Those are the types of 10,000-foot level questions that I have that, you know, it's a great idea. It's nice. We don't want to impact the neighborhood, but we do want to utilize the property. So it's a fine line that we're trying to walk, but I do have some of those types of specific questions. If you would, in your deliberations, if you would look into those kind of answers.
Absolutely. Those are all good questions. We'll address all those and get your answers on that. Try to address, again, as much as we can.
So I think you have a green light.
Good deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, and thank you, sir, for a good presentation. Thank you. Next item of business tonight is an appointment to the Riverwatch Task Force.
This is amazing.
Next item of business is an appointment to the Riverwatch Task Force. There's one vacancy on the Riverwatch Task Force for a term extending from April 6th, 2021, until April 6th, 2024. We have a good problem tonight in that the city received four applications for this one position, which is outstanding. We received applications from Sharon Gaskin, Mead Lewis, Graham Tobin, and Elizabeth Recioni. I always go, I had it, I had it right, Recioni. So I do understand that some of those folks are here tonight, and I'd like to invite them to come up one at a time and speak, if you like. You do not have to. We've had your packet in our backup material, but I would like to invite you to each, and we'll go in alphabetical order. I don't know if Sharon Gaskin is here, if she'd like to come up. I don't see her. Mead Lewis, hello, welcome, sir. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you.
My name is Mead Lewis. I'm the founder and CEO of a local tech startup that's venture capital-backed from money all across the world, where we specialize in deploying Internet of Things, sensor technology, to oil and gas pipelines to predict pipeline leaks before they happen using artificial intelligence. Before this, I was an Eagle Scout. I'm passionate about nature. And right now, we are dealing with one of the largest water crises in our local area than we've ever seen, the Phosphogypson Mine specifically. Although it will not affect our water, it's something that we need to be careful about moving into, moving into the future. So what I propose is by bringing me on to the Riverwatch Task Force is that we up our game for water testing and litter mitigation control. I live right against the river. I get trash in my yard from the river. If it's getting into my yard, you know it's going to the bottom of the river. So we need to make sure that we step up for our community, our fellow citizens, and the world around us, because everything goes downstream. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Graham Tobin, Mr. Tobin, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Graham Tobin. I've been in Temple Terrace for 25 years, and I'm now a retired professor from USF. I served in the Geosciences Department, and my research and teaching for the last 40 years, in fact, has been on hydrology, water resources, water quality, flooding, and other natural hazards. I feel that I could, in terms of this, bring some expertise to the area. I appreciate if other people have already been working on this before, then they've earned the right to be on the committee, but I'm willing to do some work in this area. As I say, I've studied stormwater runoff and did a lot of work for the Florida DOT in that, and I think I can add something to the committee if necessary. That's a lot. I'm also a good friend of Mark Rains, who is now the Chief Science Officer for Florida, so, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Doctor.
Nice to meet you.
And Mrs. Recioni. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. So I am not an environmental scientist, but I do work for the Department of Urology at USF, so I could talk to you about brains, and specifically the Huntington's Disease Society thing. So my background was in education. Back in Pinellas County, I was a special education teacher. Then I was a social worker. I worked for Department of Health and Human Services, and then a counselor, while also being a caregiver and a mom. I moved here just three years ago. I'm new to the area after a divorce that really needed to happen, because I'm in, I'm one of those hang-in-there people that, you know, in sickness and health, but my health was at risk, so here I came. My daughter's here. I started working at the university. And I have always been passionate about the environment. I'm in Pinellas County. I was involved a lot with the beaches, because they have more beaches than rivers there. Here, when I moved here, that river, man, that was my soul. Every day, I picked a park and I walked it. You know, the preserve we were talking about, I know it well. And I can't wait to see it cleaned up and that. I, you know, and I can't wait to see it cleaned up and, and that. So, no, I'm not a geoscientist or anything like that, but I do, I am very good at giving presentations. I'm good at speaking in public. I learn quickly. I am, I, I have been involved with organizations in terms of getting things done, so I'm an active member of the National Organization for Rare Diseases, NORD. So we, we are working now in 17 states to try to get, including Florida, which it's going to pass bipartisan here, to get representation for people with rare diseases presented to the legislatures. So that's something I'm very involved in. Of course, I'm always, I'm involved with the Huntington's Disease Society, and we are working now on a bipartisan bill to include Huntington's with, with ALS in terms of social security and that. So I'm not afraid to talk. I learn quickly, and I'm really, really pas, I love our river. I mean, not only does it give us water, but that river saved my life my year I moved here. It, it, it's just, you know, it, it's a living entity that provides
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Now, what will happen now, ladies and gentlemen, for those who don't know, is we, well, I guess I'll read it. Each council member has a ballot to vote for their top applicant for service on the Riverwatch Task Force. We'll pass or complete its ballots down to the city clerk, who will read the results. But prior to that, I did want to explain to all of you, we're very happy to have all four of you who have applied for this position. We're thrilled, and we would be thrilled to have any one of the four of you. So I don't want the, whoever, the other three, I don't want you to go thinking, well, they don't appreciate. We do, and we'll be knocking on your door again. So, so there's a lot of opportunities for you to be involved, and we're very thrilled that you're willing to be involved and serve the city, so.
So we have one vote for Meade Lewis by Councilmember Abel, and the rest of the council members all voted for Graham Tobin.
Okay. Very good. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Graham Tobin to, as a member of the Riverwatch Task Force from, for the term extending from April 6th, 2021 until April 6th, 2024?
I move to approve.
Second. Motion and second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no nays. Thank you again, Dr. Tobin, and thank you to the other three applicants, and, and please don't give up. We have lots of opportunities.
The other jobs.
Yeah, we need, we need talent, so. Next item of, of business is the, is the approval of the minutes from the March 16th city council meeting. If the minutes are acceptable, entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion or correction to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. No nays. Minutes are approved. Next item is persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda. Council agreed to a 30-minute time limit for all public comment to be continued at the end of the meeting if more time is needed. A three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. We do ask that speakers come to the podium and state their name and city of residence. It's important that you speak from the podium so that we get you on the record. We do like to assure all of our speakers that your comments are taken seriously. We do follow up on them, so we, we do take your comments seriously. I have one request currently, and that is from Allison Fernandez. Welcome, Mrs. Fernandez. Good to see you.
Thank you. Allison Fernandez, Temple Terrace. I am here to ask you tonight about the recycling program, curbside recycling. I know that it was stopped for a variety of reasons, but I think that we've used the collection bins. They are unsightly and ineffective. People are putting all kinds of things in those bins, not according to what could be recycled. I do know also that when I was on council previously, part of the recycling program actually helped reduce our solid waste disposal fees. I do know that we, that we at no time made money on the program, but it served a function in the city, and I would like to ask you to look at the analysis and look at the funding and look at the benefit it provides to, to the city and the residents and reinstate the curbside recycling program. We already own the trucks. It's not a matter of starting from scratch. And I would also like to ask you, when you have meetings that have something on the agenda that is extremely popular or hot-button issue, if you could, given the fact that capacity is limited here, automatically schedule those for Lightfoot or another venue that is a larger venue, because we end up with a lot of people standing outside waiting to speak, not being able to hear the conversation that's going on in here, and not being part of the meeting even though they're outside waiting to speak. So, thank you. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Fernandez. That's currently the only request I have. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda? Okay. I'm going to break with protocol for just a second. Ms. Fernandez, if, if it's with a little indulgence, if you'll let me, give me 10 seconds here. Just so you and the other members of the public know, we, we recently had our goal-setting session, the council and the city administration. Recycling was one of the first things that we talked about. We are doing some analysis now to look at possible ways to reinstate curbside recycling. It would be premature to speculate what the results of that are going to be just yet, but we hear you. We hear the community. There's, I think most of the council members would like to see the return of that as well. So we are, while I'm not, don't misunderstand, I'm not promising anything. We're doing an analysis, but we would like to get where you would like to get to. So, just so everybody knows. All right. Next item of business is a public hearing. First public hearing and reading of ordinance 1504 approving the zoning reclassification of 7032 and 7746 Temple Terrace Highway, also known as RZP 20-02. I'll open the public hearing, and Planner Celeste Lau will explain. But prior to you explaining, let me ask the city attorney a question. Mr. Schoen, are we going to be polled for ex parte communication on this?
It would probably be best.
Okay. And the reason I ask is that I think all of us, as far as I can tell, received an email late this afternoon that I know some of us have forwarded to the city clerk for inclusion in the record, but I don't know how you want us to deal with that when you poll us, because all five of us got the same email, so.
As long as it's in the record and that the applicant for the rezoning has a chance or has had a chance to look at that.
It didn't come in until after 3 o'clock this afternoon, so it's, it's in the record, but I don't know if they've had a chance to look at it yet.
Well, if the, if the clerk has it, then if she can provide it.
Okay.
If they've had a chance to look at that.
Okay. So do you want to poll us for other ex parte communications now, or is that going to take place?
I can do it now, or we, you can do it
Why don't we do it now since we're talking about it? How's that?
All right. All right. I'll ask each council member to state whether you have had any ex parte communication concerning this matter, if you have spoken to someone with regard to this matter, if you could please state who that was, what the substance of the conversation was, and when did that occur. If you received anything in writing, please provide a copy of that to the clerk and state who that was from, and when did you receive that? Start with, Councilwoman Abel.
I received an email this afternoon. My iPad has just shut down, and I cannot pull it up right now, but I did receive one. I didn't respond, and that's
Okay.
The only communication I've had is that one email that we all received this afternoon, and I believe the clerk is getting a copy for the citizens. I, I also don't have the name.
I've had the same email. I could read it if she can't find it. I have it on my phone. If necessary, I can read it, but
I have it up here, so I can read it as well. I believe, was it Christine Miranda?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's, none other than that email that we've discussed.
That's the only one for me.
My, my only ex parte was the email from Christine Miranda.
I've only had the email mentioned.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, Ms. Lau, sorry for the interruption.
No worries. Good evening. The item I am presenting tonight is RZP 20-02, which is a zoning reclassification for a property located at 7032 and 7746 Temple Terrace Highway. This item has come before council November of last year, so a lot of this information will be familiar. The subject property is located on the Terrace Hill Golf Course, which is located at the northwest corner of the Temple Terrace Highway and North 78th intersection. Currently, it's zoned, single-family residential, commercial, general, and educational institutional. The applicant is proposing to rezone it to planned development. The size of the property is approximately 35.42 acres. The map on the left shows the existing zoning for this property, with the light yellow being the single-family residential, the light blue being the educational institutional, and the red being the commercial general. The map on the right shows the proposed zoning, which is planned development, which is shown in the purple. The applicant is proposing a subdivision with 141 detached dwelling units. There was a comprehensive plan amendment application that was submitted concurrently with this application as well. Council approved of that on December 15th, 2020. The subject property now has a future land use designation of residential four, which allows for four units per acre. With the proposed units, these are the development standards that the applicant is requesting, with a minimum lot size of 5,500 square feet, a minimum lot width of 50 feet, a maximum height of 40 feet, and those following building setbacks. Here is a concept plan with the subject property boundary highlighted in the yellow. The blue is showing where the 141 units will be. The green is the stormwater retention pond areas, and the red is showing the future commercial areas and the remaining portion of the Terrace Hill Golf Course. The proposed development is expected to have two entrances or access points, with the main access point being on Temple Terrace Highway and the secondary access point on North 78th Street. Here are some renderings of the proposed homes. The homes range from three to five bedrooms and one to two stories. One of the concerns that council brought up, as well as some residents brought up, was the buffering between the properties and the riverfront preserve, which is located directly north of the subject property. The applicant is proposing a six-foot synthetic PVC fence on the northern and eastern boundary of the property. This type of fence is a bit sturdier than your normal PVC fence. So this fence is going to be located within a 10-foot HOA tract, in which case the subdivision's HOA will maintain. Another concern that was brought up at the last meeting was the access point on Temple Terrace Highway, and so this shows the current median conditions, with the red highlighting the subject property's boundary, and the current median shown in the purple, blue, and green. And the reason why I use three different colors is to kind of show you, and hopefully it'll highlight the changes on the next slide a bit better. So again, the red is showing the subject property boundary, and the purple is showing the left-hand turn lane onto Temple Park Drive. The proposed improvement there is to lengthen it by 35 feet. The blue part, portion of the median will have a 235-foot proposed left turn lane to turn into the proposed subdivision, and the orange portion shows a bidirectional median that'll allow for a left, a left turn into the residential subdivision, but not a left The applicant is requesting a waiver from section 19 dash, oh, sorry, 12-957B5 to reduce the required parking for a four-to-six-bedroom home from five to four parking spaces. The applicant has stated that this has worked for their previous similar developments. And the planning commission found the request consistent with a comprehensive plan. City staff recommends that council approve the ordinance for RZP 20-02. That concludes staff presentation. The applicant is here as well, and they also have a presentation. However, staff and the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Well, let's have them make their presentation, and then don't go far away, and if there are questions, because we have public comment, too. So I know there are a lot of representatives for the applicant here. I don't know who would like to take the podium. Welcome. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Kami Corbett. I don't think I'm close enough. Kami Corbett for the applicant, with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, and I reside in the city of Tampa. I'm here this evening with the pleasure of representing this project. At your second time that you've heard this, actually, and I think Celeste's presentation did a nice job of reminding of you all of what you're being asked to approve tonight. And I just want to make clear for the record and for members of the public who might be watching, city council is not being asked to approve any commercial development this evening. It's simply the 141 single-family homes. The commercial is already zone commercial, but any site plan for those commercial parcels would come back to city council for review, and those, any issue related to any specific commercial use would be for your consideration, review, and at that time. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear that we're just asking for the residential rezoning this evening. I think Celeste also summarized, I didn't, although I wasn't with the applicant team at the last hearing, I did have the opportunity to watch the recording, so I could personally hear each of the questions and concerns from council and from the citizens, and was able to work with the team for the last several months to try to come up with some revised conditions, hopefully to address those concerns. You heard from Celeste that we are proposing a six-foot Simtech fence. That is a precast material that has the appearance of masonry, but is much more durable and is better for long-term maintenance. And we also are proposing that that be located in a 10-foot-wide tract that will be separately platted, and the declaration will require that to be maintained by the association. I know there were concerns expressed last time about leaving that maintenance up to individual homeowners, and how would we be assured that the fence would actually be there and be maintained. So we are addressing that through our proposed conditions. We also are proposing a change to the median. Celeste touched on it briefly. Steve Henry from Links and Associates is here, and we'll walk you through that and how we think that will improve some of the situation, some of the concerns that were raised last time. And I think at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our team. We have a brief planning presentation, which is somewhat similar to Celeste's, so we'll try not to be too duplicative. And then Steve Henry will present on the transportation issues, and then when they're done with their presentation, I'd like to close briefly with a few comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kristy Barrero with Height Design. Can we get the presentation? So the subject property is the existing Terrace Hill Golf Club. It's located on Temple Terrace Highway, which is a multimodal transportation corridor. And the nearest Hart Bus Stop is less than a half a mile east at Hamilton Hill Lane. Along the north side of the property is the Temple Terrace Riverfront Preserve Park in the Hillsborough River. Directly west of the property is the Florida College Campus. And east of the property is 78th Street and the Rolling Hills Residential Neighborhood, just to kind of get everybody's bearings. The property is located a quarter-mile west of the Point Plaza Shopping Center, and that's shown on the city's vision map as a major activity center. You can see on the graphic, it's the orange circle in the bottom right-hand corner. You can see on the graphic, it's the orange circle in the bottom right-hand corner. And it's also a mile east of the Central Business District at the intersection of Temple Terrace Highway and North 56th Street. And that's the pink area at the bottom of the screen. Other major activity centers, Bus Gardens, Adventure Island, Mozy, and the University of South Florida are all within three miles of this project. So, there is a lot of opportunities for non-residential, for these future residents to, you know, go to. The approved future land use is residential four, and as Celeste mentioned, you all approved that in December of last year. So this change that you approved will allow a maximum of 141 units. And now the zoning tonight is to decide, you know, we're asking for that maximum number of units. So as you can see from this slide, the same residential four future land use is to the east in the Rolling Hills community. The area also includes multiple residential designations that include a variety of housing products. There's park and recreation open space, which is the green that Celeste mentioned, the park to the north, and commercial and office and institutional along Temple Terrace Highway. And as was mentioned earlier, the commercial that is along Temple Terrace Highway is not part of this application this evening. It's just for the R4 portion. The properties that are dashed in italics are unincorporated Hillsborough County, and then the other ones are the city of Temple Terrace. So there's a little bit of unincorporated area in the vicinity. The applicant is proposing a planned development zoning, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight. As you can see from this slide, there is a mix of zoning districts in the vicinity of the property. Again, the districts that have yellow labels are within the city limits, and the white labels are unincorporated zoning districts. At this scale, you can see the Central Business District at the intersection of Temple Terrace Highway and North 56th Street on the west side, and the Point Plaza Shopping Center on the east side. And then mostly residential are in between those two. So this shows a more zoomed-in view of the property. You can see the existing residential development in the vicinity is mostly single-family, with some multifamily on the south side of Temple Terrace Highway. So this slide shows our conceptual plan for the project. The applicant is proposing 141 single-family detached residential units on 35.42 acres. As you can see from this graphic, there are two access points proposed. The main access point will be off of Temple Terrace Highway, and a secondary access will be off of North 78th Street. A neighborhood park is proposed near the main entrance. In an earlier draft, the applicant was proposing a pedestrian access near the cul-de-sac in the northwest corner to the city park to the north. And that was also mentioned at the swamp presentation earlier. But after discussions with nearby residents and city staff, that access has been eliminated. So again, the only access to the park would be the existing access off of 78th Street. There would not be one through this community. A drainage easement and landscape tracks are also proposed to separate the residential community from the Florida College uses to the west. And then this is the actual planned development plan that's been submitted to staff for review and approval this evening. Again, we're showing 141 single-family residential units, two access points, a neighborhood park, and a buffer along the western property line. The applicant is proposing a minimum lot size of 5,500 square feet, and that detail is shown in the upper left-hand corner. A neighborhood meeting was held on August 25 of last year in the Florida College Gymnasium. At the meeting, there was discussion regarding a wall or fence along North 78th Street, which is the eastern boundary of the property, and the northern boundary of the property that abuts the city park. The applicant has had numerous conversations with the city regarding this issue also. And it's been agreed that the applicant will install a six-foot-high Simtech fence, similar to the ones shown in the picture here, along the property's north and eastern boundary. So this slide shows a little bit more detail about the buffering around the property. Again, a six-foot-high Simtech fence will be constructed within the 10-foot tract. It'll be owned and maintained by the HOA. So these tracks are shown in blue along the northern boundary and the eastern boundary. Along the southern boundary, a 15-foot landscape buffer is proposed. That's shown in the light green color. And then, as mentioned earlier, there'll be two large stormwater ponds that are proposed to be constructed on the western property line that will provide a buffer to the property to the west. The applicant is requesting a waiver as part of this rezoning for parking. Though this level of detail is not required at the rezoning request, the applicant is planning to construct some four- and five-bedroom homes. And so we wanted to include a condition of approval for parking. And the request this evening is for four parking spaces for homes that are four and five bedrooms. This would be two parking spaces in the garage and two parking spaces in the driveway. And that's instead of the city's code that requires five parking spaces for this number of bedrooms. The four units, I'm sorry, the four parking spaces per unit has been found sufficient in multiple nearby jurisdictions. And I wanted to remind you all this evening that even though it says four bedrooms on the plan of the homes, on the floor plan, they're not necessarily all used as bedrooms. They may be a guest bedroom, an office nowadays with COVID, a playroom, storage. So there's not necessarily going to be, you know, people using all of those rooms as bedrooms. So here, on this next slide, is a chart that we put together that shows the number of parking spaces that are required in nearby municipalities. Temple Terrace's parking requirements are more than twice of the surrounding jurisdictions for these four-to-six-bedroom, single-family detached units. So as you can see, Hillsborough County, Plant City, Tampa, Pinellas County, Oldsmar, Dunedin, Manatee County, and Polk County, and Lakeland all require only two spaces for four-to-six-bedroom, single-family detached homes. Pasco County requires three spaces. And again, Temple Terrace requires five. We're again proposing four parking spaces with this development, with this planned development. And again, that's more than the jurisdictions that are listed on the screen in front of you. So this concludes all of the planning-related topics for this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Steve Henry with transportation now. And then if you have any planning-related questions, I'd be happy to answer them later on.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Henry, Links &amp; Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa, 33607. We conducted the traffic analysis for the project. I just want to go through a few highlights of the analysis. One, as far as when the counts were done. The counts were done back in August of 2019, so that was pre-COVID. Then what we do is, when the counts are done, we then use the DOT factor to factor them up to peak season. So no matter what time of the year that we do the counts, the DOT factors then factor them up to the average of the 13th-highest weeks of the year. So that's looking at a worst case for that peak season. Then in addition to that, then we added a growth rate, based on the historical growth rate in the area, to grow those up to the build-out year of the project. So we used that, and that then looked at what the impact of the project is based on the peak season plus the build-out of the project with the growth rate. Based on that analysis, all the intersections and all the driveways work at acceptable level of service with the addition of the project traffic. What we also did was, we heard last time, the concern with our access onto Temple Terrace Highway. So what I've shown here is a graphic of what was proposed, which is a full median opening. And this graphic shows the potential conflict points within an intersection with a full median opening. And as you can see, there's 18 conflicts within a median opening is a full median opening. What we're proposing to do is to make it a bidirectional median opening, meaning it'll be left in, right in, right out. This reduces the conflict points to four. So what this does is eliminates or reduces the potential for accidents by reducing the number of conflict points. And we've worked with the Hillsborough County engineer, because obviously, that's a Hillsborough County road, to work out the geometry for that, and they have approved the geometry that we're proposing here. And this kind of gives you more of a graphic of what it will look like. And so just so you can see, it's a typical, I think you've probably seen them lately, the DOT has really gone to a lot more of these directional median openings because, again, they eliminate a lot of the conflict points. So this kind of gives you a better view of what that will look like. And that really concludes the transportation aspect, unless you've got any questions for me.
Well, we may when this is all over.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kami Corbett, again, for the record. I do have a letter I'd like to pass out if I could approach. And this letter is from Tetra Tech, which is our environmental consultant. At one of the meetings, Councilwoman Abel asked a question about whether or not there was any environmental concerns because this was a former golf course. And we did get a letter from Tetra Tech confirming that they have conducted both a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, and that there are no recognized environmental concerns with the property. So if I could either pass them.
Okay.
However, the best way to do this is.
You can pass.
We don't bite.
Does the clerk have that as well?
And I did want to touch that base since you did ask that question.
Thank you.
I think we had really tried to work very hard during the last couple of months to try to come up with some revised conditions to address your concerns that were raised. I'm sure that there will probably still be some more questions. But I think the consensus from the last hearing was that resident, single-family residential really was a good use for this property, as opposed to other uses that have been previously proposed. And the planning commission has found us consistent with the comprehensive plan, and your staff is recommending approval. And we would respectfully request that you do the same. And again, we are here to answer any remaining questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Corbett. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? I have a few requests already. Jan Tumbleson? Welcome, Ms. Tumbleson.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Thank you for providing me with this time to speak. First, I want to thank the staff for providing me information and assistance. There are so many issues that have not been addressed with this rezoning. All the traffic, the size of the lots, the uses in commercial are among the few. This should not be approved without the issues and others being addressed. The council has insufficient information to make the decision that would assist the city. In your packet, the concurrency and transportation reports are not in your presentation. This is due to the ordinances do not require this information to be at the rezoning stage, only at the site development. Our Temple Terrace Fire Code Enforcement Utilities are able to support the rezonings without additional staff. Okay, you have gone over the setbacks. My concern is the lot coverage. That is 75%. That includes anything that doesn't allow water to go through, impervious, such as driveways, walkways, houses, and patios. The River Watch Task Force was created to preserve, protect the use of the Hillsborough River. With this impervious service, there will be a great deal of drainage in this part of the preservation area. This runoff will have to be filtered prior to this area. EPC is requiring only a 30-foot setback from the property lines and the wetlands. This survey may or may not be in your material. The traffic report done by Links &amp; Associates states 1,456 daily trips for just the homes. These are four-to-six-bedroom homes, and the report is based on 1.5 cars per house. How many drivers do you have in your house that require a car? Is street parking going to be the answer? This waiver should be reviewed and should not be taken lightly. Not included is additional traffic from the commercial area adjacent to Temple Terrace Highway, which will also be dumping traffic on 78th Street before the intersection of Temple Terrace Highway. You can see the design. Okay. All the levels of the street in this adjacent area are D. This includes everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tumbleson. Next up is Mr. Ritter. Welcome, Mr. Ritter.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, air. After 75 years of watching this city grow, I'm now at a point where I think that we've gone too far. 5,500-square-foot lot. That's appalling to me. My father bought our property in 1945, five lots, because he wanted a place for the kids to play. We entertained ourselves in those days. We played even in the vacant lots, with weeds higher than I was tall at the time. 5,500 square feet. Just think of that. Not much more than my wingspan separating two houses, four and five and six bedrooms? Come on. There's no privacy there. And the fact that you've got a very small front yard and a very small backyard with only 25% of the property that is pervious. Something's got to stop here. And the idea of having a waiver on the cars parked in the driveway. At one time, at my house, we had seven cars. We had seven drivers. We didn't park any cars in the street. We just poured more concrete to keep the cars off the street. It's a shame that we've gotten to this point. Let's make these lots, 7,500 square feet, have less houses and more place to park off the street. After all, we've got police and fire that need to get in there. And if you've got parking on both sides of these streets, shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Next up is Thomas Feely.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm going to ducktail off of what has been said previously. I live in River Run subdivision, which I don't think I heard mentioned tonight. But I did hear the Rolling Terrace being the subdivision right to the east on the other side of 78th Street. But the River Run subdivision is part of that also, and probably much larger than the larger of the two. And most of the people that live in River Run exit on 78th Street. My concern, and many of my neighbors' concern, is when this development is fully populated and the secondary exit is onto 78th Street, that is the route that everyone takes to go to work, to leave our development. And we're concerned about the traffic that will occur eventually when the new development is fully populated. But I also would like to recommend a solution to that. I think it's something that's easily resolved. And that is that the road, 78th Street, right before it hits Temple Terrace Highway, bends to the left so that it's aligned with 78th Street on the other side of Temple Terrace Highway. So it bends to the left. And it would be very easy to carve out a right-turn lane where it bends. And so that, right now, there's only a left-turn lane and a lane to go either straight or take a right onto Temple Terrace Highway. But I think it would be so easy and so beneficial. And if we were to be proactive, rather than wait till the problem becomes severe and then have to be reactive, we could solve that issue probably right now in the course of your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the last request I have is from Annette Rennie. Welcome, Mrs. Rennie.
Good evening. Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. Tom said it all. The biggest concern we have right now is, yes, you've put up the fence, and we're happy about that, the barrier fence to the Preserve and the fence along 78th Street to protect the conservation and so on. But the right turn, we have accidents there now all the time. Between there and the former river chase, which is not far from their main entry, is definitely an issue. There needs to be a designated right turn for safety reasons. It's hard when you pull out from our subdivision onto Temple Terrace Highway to even see what's coming from the left, because it juts out. It's a blind corner. To add more people exiting that without some kind of designated right turn is just a problem looking for a place to happen. And it will happen. I mean, I think, we don't go through a week where we don't have one or two accidents at that corner. Actually, the county needs to step in and put a light there with a designated turn right also. But right now, stating this zoning and stating that they're going to be there without doing something to the street for a right turn would be just suicidal. So I hope that you consider that. And I also have to say that I think the other speaker was correct, and these are very small lots. I would like to see less, more square footage on the lot, but that's a wish. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Rennie. Are there, excuse me, are there other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Sir, welcome. Please state your name and city of residence.
I took some notes on my phone, listening to everyone speaking. My name's Bill Neal, and I'm Temple Terrace, River Ridge Drive. Some of my fellow people here I live with, they may not agree with what I'm saying, but forgive me. As far as traffic goes, I go through that intersection every day, two, three times a day. I don't have an issue with the traffic. There is an alternate exit out of our neighborhood that no one's talked about that is a little bit further east, if they feel that intersection is really dangerous. And I will admit, there is some danger to that intersection. That has nothing to do with this property, has to do with the wall. That was in existence before. As far as lot sizes, you know, I think it's consistent with modern developments right now, and technically, as a free country, if somebody wants to buy something that's too small, they obviously are educated enough to do that. If they find that that lot is too small, then they just don't buy there. So I just find that kind of a non-issue. Housing spacing between each other is consistent with modern building. Me and my brother live in a new development in Valrico. Parking, I find to be consistent with other new, modern developments, but once again, I'd like to lean on engineers, not just emotions. And, let's see, I know our neighborhood was very much against apartments, and my fear is that if we shoot this project down, and that's why I'm here speaking, is that if we don't come to terms with the housing development and this gets shot down, then we're going to be staring at apartments again. And I know we are much more adamant against apartments, and I'd like to think that, you know, I live in this development, River Run, as you said, was not mentioned. I feel that the presentations tonight were very impressive, very to the point, and I think it's very consistent with modern building. And all I ask is that we take a motion out of it and lean on engineers, traffic engineers, land engineers, consistencies with other modern developments. You know, just because we think that the properties between houses is too small, I think is getting a little trivial. Once again, my main goal here is I would like something to happen. This land is just sitting there rotting away. I believe the golf course is closed, is that right? I just found that out this morning, so I'm just asking. So the land is just dilapidating. So it's eventually going to be something. If we're not for apartments and we're not for this development, then what are we for? Going back to apartments again? So that's all I have to say. Once again, lastly, just to close, is just let our professionals and engineers guide us and kind of take a little emotion out of it. I think it's a great opportunity for the city for tax revenue, and it's great for the area, and kind of consistent with what we originally were fighting for, was not apartments. So thank you very much for your time. One last comment, I got vaccinated today. I don't know if any of you guys here had any say in having that site for Temple Terrace. I know at least 50 people got vaccinated today, and I want to thank you guys or whoever planned it, and I hope you plan one more, because I know a lot of people would like to go. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Ma'am, please approach the podium. Just begin with your name and city, please.
Janet Moyer, Temple Terrace. I've lived here 25 years. I live in the Rolling Terrace Development that's right next door. I think that the developer did a great job hearing our issues last August. I was there, and the things they've changed based on that is great. I am equally concerned about the 78th Street light, because the other way to get out of River Run is to come through Rolling Terrace. So I think what will eventually happen when there's traffic on 78th, they're going to start cutting through our neighborhood. And right now, it's pretty quiet. So it's a great suggestion to have a turning lane. I think it will solve a lot of problems. I think the way your entrance onto Temple Terrace Highway is going to create people using 78th Street more. So it's just a good consideration to put in a turning lane. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Stevenson, we'll go out of order, just for, can we talk about, before I open it up for council member questions, can we talk about this right turn lane a little bit? I know that there's a right turn only out of the proposed subdivision, so I can already figure out that that alleviates some of the right turn traffic. Can you, are you prepared, or maybe Ms. Lao, to talk about why, the pros and cons of requiring a right turn-only lane to be added to 78th Street? Is that something that we even looked at, or?
Let me, let me, yes. We've had some field discussion with the civil engineer on this property. We've actually gone out there and worked it, walked it, and looked at the feasibility of putting a right-hand turn lane in there. We looked at the feasibility and talked with the county about restriping it. The county is not in favor of restriping it, because it's offset from 78th Street on the south side of Temple Terrace Highway. So they're not encouraging us to do that. The statement was made that a right-hand turn lane can be very easily put in there. That is inaccurate. There is a lot of underground, there's a lot of pole mechanisms that would have to be relocated, so on and so forth. At this point in time, I don't think that the right-hand turn lane is warranted, according to the traffic engineering. When, what I would propose is when we look at a site plan and development of the commercial property, the commercial property is slated to have another exit onto 78th Street, at that point in time, I think the improvements to 78th Street intersection needs to be incorporated then, and not now with this rezoning. So we have, we have walked this, I mean, I've personally been out there, it's not an easy task, and there's really no easy solution. We tried to work with the county to try to find a way to even restripe it, and that is not a possibility either. So again, I think that there is a tremendous amount of planning, there's a tremendous amount of work that's going to have to go with the county in order to realign those traffic signals, so on and so forth, and I think the county is not prepared to do that at this time, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. So council members' questions, we have a number of people to ask questions of, so if we can, try to distill our questions down to a specific question and who we want to ask it of, so we don't have six of them trying to figure out who you want to answer that. So council member questions? Mr. Sisler.
Well, I don't know that I can distill it down too far, because I'm not sure exactly who's going to be responsible for the answer.
Okay.
But I have several different top, two topics. One being the fencing, and this could just be a general, whoever wants to try and, I'm sorry, whoever wants to try and field that fencing question. I understand the fencing on the north to buffer for the conservation area, the east, or the, I'm sorry, the east portion, I guess just to keep it off the street, but why not the west part that goes around the Preserve? If I look at the diagram, there's still a chunk that goes around the Preserve. I'm not sure why there isn't some there, and that's just a general question. I would assume, I would have assumed that if the residents were the ones who were concerned about that, whether they would address it. Now, I am seeing in the, in the one picture here, it shows, it looks like a retention pond to the east of the, like in the northeast corner, okay? Is that, my concern is, the east from Temple Terrace Highway up to that area borders on Florida College property, or the Florida Academy property. They're the ones that are going to be requesting that. I'm concerned with stuff that goes around the retention pond, around the, borders on the Preserve. So were there not the same considerations for that portion of it being fenced in? And again, that...
Mr. Stevenson.
Can I, can I approach the fence on 78th Street? Because we...
Yeah. Okay.
May I do that? We had spoken with the engineer of the project, and we were trying to incorporate in the development the removal of that fence to fix this blind spot. The civil engineer came back, they gave us a number that I don't think that I'm comfortable with signing on with. I have spoken with Mr. Tinch about having our crews do that work. I think we can do it for half the cost, and we can do it internally. Most of it is vegetation, and a very large tree that I think, and we can't really get to the tree yet, because there's so much vine attached to the wall, but I think the tree and the vine is basically holding that fence up anyway. So it's probably not a bad idea that we look at this from a standpoint of our liability, the city's liability, to do this work, and we're prepared to take that on as a city project.
Tell me where that is again?
I'm sorry?
What corner is that?
That would be on the northeast corner, where the pond is, okay? The first 50 feet of that fence off the intersection, we actually own. We have a parcel of ground that is city property there. We're not quite sure just yet. Oh, no, no. Thank you. We're not quite sure yet how much of that fence we're going to have to take out, but I tell you that, looking at it, there is a, there is a rather large section that's going to have to come out, and that wall actually belongs to the property owner, the first property owner right there in Rolling Terrace. So we're going to have to work with him, but certainly the 50 feet that we have control of, I think is very easily done and open it up with taking the vines out, taking the vegetation out, and putting a channeling fence to match the rest of it that's there, I think will solve most of the problem on 78th Street as far as the blind spot. And you're absolutely correct, there is a blind spot, and it's been there, not as a result of this development, but just over the years, that needs, it needs to be addressed. And it's fortunate that this development now has brought to our attention, because it needs to be done. So we're going to, we're going to address that as a city project, so.
You have, who's got?
Madam Clerk, would you mind pulling up slide number nine, just so everybody can see what we're talking about here? Kristi Barrero with Height Design again. So to answer your question, Councilman, yes, there is a proposed fence along the north and the east, and I do see what you're talking about. There is a small piece of property on the west side, but you're correct, abuts the park rather than the college property. There's also a stormwater pond there, but if the council members are all in agreement that, let's see, is this a pointer also?
No.
No.
Okay, so the very northeast corner, there is a small piece before it jogs again and does the little tetra shape. That farthest west piece of property, if you all would like to see the Simtech fence there and a 10-foot easement, then the developer and applicant is willing to put that in there also.
I'd like to see Lisa be consistent all the way around, bordering on the environmental property.
Right, okay. Yeah, so we're definitely, we're willing to change that to do the wall all the way around the park property that the city owns, and then along 78th Street.
I think that would be more consistent. Now, my other question, be more traffic-related, okay? All right. We've got 141 houses, say two cars per house, that's 282. There's 250-plus, if my information is correct, homes in the River Run or River, Rolling Terrace and River Run areas, okay? So that's potentially another 500 cars. Now, your traffic studies, what is the acceptable level of traffic on the 78th Street?
That's Level Service D.
Pardon me?
Level of Service D, as in dog.
You mean number.
As far as a number?
Yeah.
Well, there's not necessarily, well, the number would be, if you're looking at link volume, it'd be about 1,300 cars per day.
Okay. So 13, okay, and the traffic, I'm concerned with traffic congestion coming out of those three complexes now.
And we've looked at that, and I could tell you that part of it is, you know, and what we use to do, one, we did the counts, we know exactly what volumes are there today. And then what we use is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and that is a, actually, a, three volumes of different land uses, you know, from single-family to every other land use you could think of. And these are studies that have been done throughout the country, and in this case, there's about 175 studies that have been done on single-family residential to establish what that trip rate is. And what we look at is the AM and the PM peak hours, what that will generate per home. And we then use those numbers to come up with what the impact of the project is. But this is data, this is national data that has been used throughout the country. Again, a lot of studies have been done to establish what those trip rates are. So then what we do is we use that numbers, and we put it on top of, as we have explained, take the existing counts, factor them to peak season, and then add a growth rate to those. And then based on that, then we look at what the impact of the project is. And we took our traffic, and we looked at the, with the directional median opening that we'll have on Temple Terrace Highway, and we looked at what the impact is on 78th. And on 78th, we use a computer model, it's a simulation model, that actually looks at and actually will tell us exactly what the queuing is, what the level of service is, based on the actual signal timing, because we also go and we get the actual signal timings from the county for what that signal's operating at. And based on that, that intersection will operate at a Level of Service C. And in fact, we looked at the southbound approach. That southbound approach will actually operate at a Level of Service B, as in boy. So we've looked at, we've looked at all the aspects of it, we've looked at the queuing of the traffic, we've looked at the overall intersection, to make sure that, one, the left turn lane is there is adequate, that there's adequate to be able to, because also we look at our driveway, to make sure that we don't have any Level of Service issues with people getting in and getting out. We've looked at that. That operates at a Level of Service A and B. So we've looked at all this, but go ahead.
All right. Now, my concern, back in November when this first came up, was the original cut-through on the median to allow cars to travel east. That's been addressed, that's great. Now, all the cars were going to do that, now are going to funnel out onto 78th Street. So you're going to have, that's the only way out, okay? Unless you go out and then have to have a U-turn down towards the river further.
The people that might, the reality is, the people that may go east, yes, that those will then go out onto 78th Street. And we've factored that into the analysis to look at that. The reality is, as you indicated, people going west, they're going to make a right out of the, they're not going to go in.
No question. I'm concerned with the east.
Yeah, and we...
There's a business development going in down the street that has the potential of another 700, 800 employees, okay? How many of those would potentially buy in there, or, you know, what level's that going to be? The 301 corridor is an up-and-coming, growing area. I'm not looking for today, I'm thinking five years down the road, what kind of issues we're going to create. Now, the whole thing can be answered with, is since it's a county road, since it's county lights and systems, will we be able to, or we, will somebody be able to mitigate the timing of the lights, so that it reduces the congestion for people traveling east out of the complex area?
Absolutely. The county, the county actually, and you certainly, if there are excessive delays there, you can always call the traffic department at the county, they will look at the signal, they will look at the timing, and most of these signals are now... And most of these signals are now actuated. And what that means is, is they actually look at the number of cars in there, and a lot of them are run on camera. They look at the number of cars and they'll give the green time to allocate it. So it may be that one cycle, only three cars show up. It may get 10 seconds. The next cycle, there may be 10 cars. It'll give it 20 seconds. So it actually, these are a lot different than the old days where it was one timing and it ran the whole time. These are actually interactive. And so they will, they will, they will change timing with each cycle based on the demand of that approach.
That type of lighting equipment is in place in there, because I know there's places on the county highways, 56th Street and Temple Terrace, I mean, yeah, Temple Terrace Highway and Fallon, that you don't have that. Okay? And you will be stuck there if you get too many cars.
No, there's, they're actuated signals now, there are limits to those.
Sure, sure.
To how much time they'll get to something.
My concern is for the residents that are there, that they're going to get stuck in long queue times to get out of the place. Getting in's fine. Going to the right, I understand, going west, I understand about the right-hand turn, there's logistical issues that may or may not be insurmountable. But when you come to 78th Street and you've got to go east, it's a bad intersection, which Mr. Stevenson said that the city can address, you know, amicably, but I'm worried about, concerned about an awful lot of cars trying to get out of there to go east through that intersection because they no longer can go east out of the center lane, which is a good thing, because I was concerned with people getting T-boned coming out of there. But that is going to create an incredible amount of traffic, I'm afraid. And I don't know how to quantify an incredible amount of traffic. 20 cars, 50 cars, I have no idea. But another 288 cars hitting that intersection going, some are going to go east, some are going to go west, is going to be an imposition on the people that are there.
And certainly, and we've looked at that.
Okay.
And we looked at the analysis and that's what I'm saying is that that movement is actually a level of service B. So we've looked at it with existing and with our traffic on the projection of what would be going east, and it's a level of service B. So...
Don't misunderstand me. I like the, I like the project. I'm not trying to rewrite the civil engineering or the traffic engineering code book by any stretch of the imagination. I'm just voice in the concerns that I think that are, it would bother me if I lived in there. I don't, but it would. I've been in and out of those intersections hundreds of times through the years that I've lived here. That's my concerns. Thank you. Thank you for the answers. I'm done.
Council members. Councilmember Abel.
I think this is a question for Mr. Stevenson. Could you please speak to how this will impact our staffing and services, police, fire, code enforcement, utilities? Please?
Well, during the process, I mean, all these departments and through the DRC review, they get a chance to review all this. We've had no negative comments from any of the departments.
Will it have any impact on staffing and how many employees we might need?
I'm not anticipating any. No matter.
Thank you.
Other council member questions? Mr. Chambers. Well, we've got to move around here, Mr. Sisler.
That's fine.
Mr. Chambers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Currently, this is Zoned R9, correct? Somebody shake their head yes? Thank you. Okay. How many homes can be built on R9? If this was developed as R9, how many homes would be in there? Does anybody know or can figure it out roughly? I just want to know the difference between R9 and the 141.
So the density is determined by the future land use, which is what was approved back in December. So council approved of R4 being the overall future land use designation, which allows for four units per acre. So the 141 units is the maximum amount of homes they can have on the 35.42 acres.
Okay. And if zoning didn't change, how many homes would they have in there?
They would still be allowed, the 141 homes, in terms of the future land use designation. 35.42 acres.
Didn't hear the answer.
We can't, yeah. Speak that again.
There again.
Nine units, nine units per acre. R9. 35, and again, 35 times 9 is 315.
It does. So if we do nothing, 300-plus homes can be built on that property. Yeah, okay. You may, you may have something, a comment? No, okay.
Girls, people can't hear you. I'm getting a lot of people...
Yeah.
My microphone was on.
Yeah, I don't...
There you go, that's better.
So R9 and 35 acres would allow you to build 315 units.
Okay. Thank you. We have no's from the back, yes, from the front.
Mr. Chambers, are you still on the floor or do you?
I guess. I've gotten the information from staff, thank you.
Are there other council member questions?
No questions.
Let one follow up. Mr. Sisler.
One quick follow up. Considering these are lot lines essentially, I know they're very close together, will there be deed restrictions on fencing for the, between the individual housing at this point? Does anybody know?
Yeah, Kami Corbett again for the record, fences will be allowed between the properties, yes.
Ms. Corbett, could you remain up there, please? I have a question for you. What is, and this is a bit of a hypothetical, so I don't, if you can't answer it concretely, that's okay. As terms of the homeowners association being responsible for the maintenance and replacement of the fence in perpetuity, what happens in, under Florida law, I mean, could an HOA be dissolved? And if so, what would happen if it were dissolved? Because one of my concerns, as everybody's aware, was the, some type of barrier between the subdivision and the preserve. And I'm comfortable with the barrier that you're putting, but the lingering question then on my mind is, you know, it's a good product, but everything has a lifespan in Florida. You know, I mean, it's not going to live forever. And so what happens if 15 years from now, that fence is in bad shape and the HOA, I don't know, can, certainly it can dissolve. How does that?
Actually, the HOA, because we are going, we have, we actually have a water management district permit for this site, and a water management district, and this is, again, a little bit sidebar in terms of, you're talking about a fence and I'm talking about the water management district, but there's a reason for that. The water management district requires you to establish a maintenance entity, which is an HOA. And the documents themselves, in order to be approved by water management, require that if the HOA is dissolved, it has to be replaced by a similar not-for-profit. So you can't leave, pursuant to Florida law, you can't leave an association like this without some kind of maintenance entity. And so there will perpetually be, through the declaration, an obligation to maintain this property through either the HOA or a similar not-for-profit that complies with the water management district.
But who does that obligation fall to?
Who does it fall to?
Yeah.
The residents will be, eventually residents will be operating the homeowners association.
No, no, no. But suppose that the future, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, whatever, the fourth owner of this house, and they dissolve the HOA and the original approval of the subdivision required that they can't do that, they have to replace it. But who's got the legal duty to replace it? Are they going to come and penalize every homeowner in there? How does that?
What I'm saying to you as a matter of, as an operation of law, the HOA cannot go away. The regulatory schemes and legal schemes is not, the documents themselves, the self-executing documents, do not allow that to occur.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. And one more question, and that's good, thank you. Ms. Lau, could you talk just briefly for our benefit and the benefit of the public about, one of the conditions of approval seems to be in our packet that, but it's not been talked about tonight, is that there's no street parking in the subdivision and nobody's brought this up. Can you please speak to that?
Yeah. During our site visit with the applicant and city staff, we did bring up the waiver for the parking and staff was concerned about street parking. During that meeting, we discussed with the applicants stating that, you know, on-street parking would not be allowed within the neighborhood and it would be declared within their HOA document. I think we also discussed about placing appropriate signs within the neighborhood stating that on-street parking was not allowed.
Okay. Thank you. And so these parking signs will be put up, they'll be put up by the developer. Are they Florida statute compliant, no parking signs, so that this can, this is a violation that can be enforced by our police or code enforcement? Or are they just internal HOA rules?
That, I think you have a couple of attorneys here.
I see the police chief maybe would like to speak to that. I'm not trying to do a gotcha, but this is, this was an important thing at the last. Chief is...
Sir, if you were to, if you as a council were wanting to establish something, then that would be in the course of Florida statute and that would be enforceable by your law enforcement officers. If an HOA decides to make those same restrictions, that's not the same.
Okay. So there's no street parking, that's a condition of approval, but the prohibition on street parking is an HOA rule, enforceable by the HOA? Well, are these private roads or are these city roads? So these are going to be city roads. So the no parking on the street restriction is enforceable by the HOA only? No. So, yeah, let's clarify this if we can.
Kami Corbett again for the record. We are proposing a private restriction, but we don't have any objection to any public restriction as well. We are, we have provided language, both in a form of a condition and a form of a HOA declaration, that very specifically states that there is no street parking. And so that would be, it would be, it could be a violation of both. If, when, it's a private restriction that you can't within the community, and if the city wanted to also impose something, I don't think there would be any objection to that whatsoever.
Well, we could, but I don't think we're going to single out one subdivision in our city to make an ordinance for...
Right. No. And I just wanted to let you know, we wouldn't object to that, but we are definitely planning on privately enforcing it. We do do it in our other communities and that's how we're able to manage that.
All right. That's very good. Thank you so much. All right. Other council member questions? Not time for comments yet, just questions.
I don't have a question, I just have comments.
Okay. Well, any other council member questions? Council member questions? Staff, anything else? City manager, Ms. Lau, anything? Okay. Petitioner, final word? Or applicant, petitioner, final word?
Just real briefly, just again to remind you, you are in a quasi-judicial proceeding with this rezoning and we do have to rely on substantial competent evidence. And I think you've had, have heard plenty of substantial competent evidence this evening about compatibility and consistency, notwithstanding the concerns with respect to the lot size. We have been found to be consistent and compatible and hopefully we have answered your questions and we would respectfully request your approval this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. I will now close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance, please.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 35.42 plus minus acres of land located at 7032 and 7746 Temple Terrace Highway from zoning classification, single-family residential, R9 commercial, general and educational institutional to planned development Temple Terrace for RZP 20-02, requesting a waiver from Land Development Code Section 12-957B5, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance 1504, approving the zoning reclassification of 7032 and 7746 Temple Terrace Highway, RZP 20-02. Second?
There's a motion and a second by Councilmember Abel. Discussion on the motion. Vice Mayor, I know you have been...
Thank you. I love those words, substantial, competent. Those two apply to everything we've heard tonight. Opinion is, there's no place for that here and there's lots of it. And, you know, we all, we can own our opinions, but this, I'm seeing that, I appreciate that the count was done in 2019, so we can't say, well, 2020, nobody went anywhere. So we know that this was before we were all staying home. I appreciate the fact that our community development department weighs in and they say yes or no, we can handle fire, police, water. I very much appreciate the size of these lots because while, you know, a lot of us have big yards to mow, there are a lot of people out there who aren't looking to mow and they're more than happy to have a smaller lot to handle. And I also hope, and I know that these are not affordable homes as far as that type of house goes, but I think the smaller lot and bigger house helps to keep it a reasonably priced home. I have no idea what these are going for, so please don't anybody assume, think that I assume that they're low-income housing or anything of that nature, but hopefully they will bring families to our city. We need more homes in Temple Terrace. I know we have several realtors here tonight who can tell you that their phones have been buzzing, people want to move here. And I don't know if any of you have ever read in the paper about the strength of an HOA, but, I mean, you can't flag, you can't hang a flag without permission from an HOA. So I'm guessing that if anybody comes down on you about parking on the street, it would be the HOA. So, and that's why I am voting, moving to approve this measure.
Other comments, discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays?
Welcome to the neighborhood.
The ordinance is passed. 1504 is passed. Thank you, everybody, for your work on this and comments and appreciate all your work. Next item on the agenda is a resolution adopting SPR 21-01, the final site plan for Enigma Plaza 8633 North 56th Street. Senior Planner Gus Karpas will explain. Welcome, Mr. Karpas.
Yes, good evening. Hopefully this goes a little bit quicker. So what you have before you...
Hold on, Gus. Let's everybody move out of the chambers and have a discussion.
You're free to stay. You should stay in the school board meetings. Okay, we're at that point now. If you don't want to hear anymore, leave.
Okay. Mr. Karpas, I think we can hear you better now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So what you have before you tonight is a site plan for Enigma Plaza. And that's located, I'm going to have to, why am I not? There we go. So we're located in the downtown overlay district at 8633 North 56th Street. It's the proposal to renovate an existing 34,700 square foot commercial multi-tenant And at this point, there's no number of tenants that are being proposed. I'm really sorry about this, guys.
There wouldn't be a meeting without this happening.
There we go. So here we have the site plan. Again, the structure itself is not being changed other than there's going to be some facade changes. There's going to be a walkway on the outside, there's going to be a parapet wall included. There's going to be some changes to the parking lot. They are asking for a waiver for the number of islands required in the parking lot itself. required in the parking lot itself. They require nine islands to break up the parking lot, they are looking to four, staff has approved four, which allows them to meet their tree mitigation. And they're all in the front, not in the rear.
So, I don't mean to interrupt, has allowed them to meet what mitigation?
The tree mitigation. So, they need a certain amount of trees, they weren't meeting them until they put these other islands in. So, their landscaping was not approved until they put these other islands in, and then, in the back, they did break it up, but in the front is where I thought that was more important that they put that green space in. And I apologize, let's see if this goes. Okay, these are some elevations here, and they're more technical, but these are the better ones here. So, here's the colored elevations. And this is what they're looking to do here, and again, staff did recommend approval for this with the waivers for the islands. I'm trying to look here. No, we didn't, we didn't feel that there were any additional islands required. We did feel that they did meet the requirements of the ordinance. This has been a project that's been going on for a while, and the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, could we have Mr., could we have Mr. Carpus read those waiver requests into the record?
Yes, I can. Okay, so, section 12, 1048, I gotta read these, B of the Land Development Code requires a minimum of 25 square foot of landscaping for every 150 linear feet of interior parking area. The city enforces this through the addition of landscaping islands. Under the ordinances, under the ordinance, the applicant is required to place in additional line landscaping islands, seven islands in the front parking area, and two in the rear. The applicant is requesting to place four additional islands, all would be placed in the front parking area. Staff is supportive of the requested waiver in the front parking area, given the layout, excuse me, of the existing landscaping islands in conjunction with the additional islands. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read here. With the additional islands, will substantially meet the intent of the ordinance by breaking up the expanse of open paved areas and provide adequate shade area for the parking spaces. Staff does not believe additional islands in the back are necessary, given the layout and location of the lot. Again, the applicant worked with the arborist to meet the tree mitigation and landscaping, and the islands allow them to do that.
Very good. Council members, questions for Mr. Carpus?
So, I wanna make sure I understand. What's the total now of islands?
They've got a total of, geez, four in the front out of the nine that were required, but they've got-
That's in addition to the existing?
In addition to the existing, yes.
Okay, so that means it's more than four?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's-
They got seven total.
Okay, they have seven total?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Sisler?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the, with the waiver, but my question is, I thought originally, maybe I'm wrong, it's been so long since this first came before us, I thought there was, and maybe it is, are gonna be units all the way around?
Yes, there is.
How many units total then?
And that's undetermined, the applicant is here.
Approximate.
Twenty-two units inside the building.
And it'd be an off-site?
Well, is that part, before you come up, is this part of the site plan approval, or is this, or is this ancillary information?
This is part of the site plan.
No, the number of units, is that part of the site plan approval process, or is this a question that's outside of that scope? I just don't want us to devolve into a conversation about something that's outside what we're doing.
Sorry, I'm in N C, Building Official Director of Community Development. The number of the unit does not have any in relation to the site plan, okay? That's part of the building and interior, if you will, down the road, tenant finisher space, but again, as a reference, if you'd like to know, is it 22-unit inside the building, that's what they're proposing?
Well, I would, but it goes all the way, right?
Yes, yes.
Site plan review, that was my big, main question.
Yes.
Is it gonna be an off-site?
Right, they have the canopy all around.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, other questions? No, Mr. Carpus?
I have a question about the colors.
Is that part of the site plan approval process?
I mean, he showed us the color, so.
But, yes, they meet the downtown requirement.
Okay. I don't know if this is an appropriate question. Is that the only color we can paint? I mean, everything is that color.
Okay, well, that's another, that's council business.
Okay, all right.
Site plan business, site plan.
No, no, I mean, when you look at the structure, you know, you have, you know, the, you know, the different colors, it's-
Are there questions of Mr. Carpus about the site plan?
It was on the thing, so I thought it was an eligible question, okay.
All right. So, does the applicant wish to say, there's not in the notes here, but I know they're here, do you wish to say anything on, you don't have to, but you, remember, you know this, we're talking about site plan.
Sam Araf, 13 to 50, North 56th Street here in Temple Terrace.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
I just wanna reiterate what Mr. Carpus said, it's an existing building, the proposed improvement is just on the perimeter of the building, and putting landscape islands, beautify the, the area, and the number of units, it's approximately 22, that may change up or down depending on new users that are coming, new tenants. That's, that's about it.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council member questions? If not, is there a motion to adopt Site Plan Review 21-01?
To approve the resolution for, to adopt Site Plan Review 21-01 for Enigma Plaza on 56th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays, the site plan is reviewed. Thank you very much for your patience tonight. It's good to see you back, we've been missing you. Were you the gentleman that was trapped out of the country?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we're glad to see you back in town.
Thank you so much.
We're anxious to get this moving.
I was, yeah, difficult to breathe.
Yeah.
I was trapped in Trinidad and Tobago, in fact, to leave Trinidad, you need permission, and there were no flights. It was, even if you wanna take a charter flight, I actually took a charter flight coming back in, and finally, I'm here, very excited. I know this project got delayed by a year, but we will finish it as soon as possible.
You're not going anywhere.
We are, we're very anxious to, to get it done, we're glad to see you home safely.
Will we have your passport, please?
We welcome you back safely, I'm glad to see you back.
Yes, thank you so much.
Nice to have you back.
Thank you for your kind patience here while we were just building the process. Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Greg Pauli is very kind to us, to assist us, and while we lost our, one of the engineers, so we had to go over the reviews again with the new engineer. Works good now.
Well, we're happy to see you home safely.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving the purchase of outdoor fitness equipment from Top Line Recreation. Leisure Services Director Carl Langfeld will explain. Welcome, Mr. Langfeld. Always a pleasure, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm here tonight requesting a resolution for the approval of purchase of outdoor playground equipment from Top Line Recreation in the amount of $48,655.60 for installation at Lynnwood Park. Currently, Lynnwood Park has outdoor fitness equipment at it that was purchased and installed back in 2008. This is well-used equipment, and especially, was especially well-used over the past year by lots of members of the community during periods of time when many fitness centers and other opportunities for organized exercise programs had been closed during COVID. It is a park that is the part of the fitness regime of lots of people who live in that area, who walk to that park and then utilize the fitness equipment in that area. Over the past 12 years that that equipment has been in place, it is exposed to rain and the elements, and has just rusted and deteriorated to the point that, while we have tried to put mandates on pieces of equipment to keep it going, it is time for it to be replaced. The purchase of this equipment will be piggybacking on Clay County bid 18/19-2, and has, has been found consistent with, with the Finance Department, and will come from appropriation code 001-1896-572.6499. I stand for any questions that you may have regarding this purchase.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Langfeld. Other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, are there any questions of Mr. Langfeld? Councilmember Abel?
I do. That, that equipment was installed around the time I bought my home, and I've seen it over the years as it's been used a lot and gone through its decay. And I was wondering, are you replacing each item with the same item, or is it, or is it gonna be mixed up a little bit?
It is, they are going to be very similar, they're from different manufacturers, so different manufacturers have different angles on how they approach the fitness, but there will be equipment that is very similar to what is out there with regards to the body parts that are exercised and the modes that they're exercised, whether it's a shoulder press, or a leg lift, or, you know, a stair climber, that type of equipment. So, there are eight pieces coming out and eight pieces going in.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Sisler?
Real quick, I promise, is there direct access through, to Summit West through, can, can people-
Yes and no.
I went back there before, and I couldn't-
There is no, there is no city fencing on the west side of the park that would preclude access from Summit West. Summit West does have, I believe, fencing all around their property, the condition of that fence and whether or not there are holes in that fence. There's nothing from, on the, on the park itself that prevents people from accessing the park from the west.
Have we had any vandalism issues with it?
Not at that park.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
First, please.
Few questions, the playground equipment, does, did it survive?
It survived, and it stays.
Okay, and how about chin-up bars, pull-up bars? Can we add those?
They are not on the list, but chin-up bars are something that can be easily constructed without having to go out and purchase them, so I can look into, into, there should be plenty of room out there that we can put in some chin-up bars out there.
And I'm just happy that Rotary, the last time we did this park, my Rotary club had to raise the money for the equipment, so I'm thrilled.
Good. After no other questions, if acceptable, is there a motion to approve?
There is. I move the resolution to approve the purchase of outdoor fitness equipment for Lynnwood Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Chambers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. I know you seconded it too, but I was giving Mr. Chambers a, all right. Next item is the second public hearing and reading of adopting ordinance 1507, granting authority to correct Scrivener's errors. I will open a public hearing, and City Attorney Pam Shoshon will give a brief summary.
As I mentioned last time, when we had the first reading of this ordinance, there, throughout the state, I've discovered that there were many cities who dealt with the problem of Scrivener's errors in different ways. Quite a few of them included a paragraph in every single ordinance, giving either the clerk, the city attorney, the city manager, or any combination thereof, the authority to correct Scrivener's errors once the ordinance was adopted. Rather than add that to every single ordinance, we had proposed, and as many other cities do, they have a blanket ordinance that permits city, the clerk, the city attorney, or the city manager, or a combination thereof, to make corrections to non-substantive errors found in an ordinance, or resolution, or some other document that the council passes or adopts. The way this would work is that, in ours, the city clerk would make the correction, but only after some consultation with the city attorney, and if they both agree that this is a non-substantive error, a typo, a grammatical error, a misnumbering, there may be two As, or, you know, it may go one, three, and skip number two by accident in a paragraph. Things that do not at all change the content, the intention, the meaning of the particular document. Once the error is corrected, the ordinance would require that a report to council be made within the next 30 days after the correction, to council as to what that correction was, and a copy of the corrected document would be attached to the report. In discussion with the clerk as to how this was going to work, the clerk would make the, would make the actual report to present to you, as far as the written one with the attached document, and it's very possible, though, that the city attorney, during the city attorney's presentation on the regular agenda, would actually tell you, and at the same time, the public, what the correction was, so that the clerk could continue to take her minutes rather than make the oral presentation. So, if that's all right with you, that's not necessarily in the ordinance, but that's how we thought of making it work in order to let everybody know what the correction is.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Shoshon. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, you have any questions for the city attorney on this item? Okay, very good, then I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2, Section 2-82 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled City Clerk, by adding a provision relating to the authority to correct Scrivener's errors, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to accept ordinance 1502, oh, 7, I'm sorry, 1507?
To approve ordinance 1507.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Chambers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays, the ordinance is passed. Next item is a resolution opposing, no, I'm sorry, did I skip, oh, no, I didn't, okay. I thought I lost my place, and I didn't. Next item is a resolution opposing House Bill 55 and Senate Bill 284 preempting the city, these bills would preempt the city from regulating building design in residential areas. We have legal intern Emily Basham is going to explain this for us, so, Emily, before you do that, so you have been interning here with our legal department.
Yes, for about three months.
Very good, and how much longer will you be here?
Just about two more weeks.
Two more weeks, great.
And we just get to meet you at the end?
Well, we're, we're very happy to have you, have had you here, anyway, and, so, very good.
Thank you, guys.
So-
Good evening. House Bill 55 and Senate Bill 284 preempt local governments from regulating building design elements in residentially zoned districts. These bills define building design elements to mean the exterior color, the type or style of exterior cladding material, the style or material of roof structures or porches, the exterior non-structural ornamentation, the location or orientation of the garage, the number and types of rooms, and the interior layout of rooms. These bills have limited exceptions for historic districts, community redevelopment areas, and planned unit developments that are created before July 1st, 2021. Right now, House Bill 55 has been temporarily postponed, but Senate Bill 284 has gone forward to the Rules Committee. This resolution opposes House Bill 55 and Senate Bill 284 because these bills would take away the local government's ability to work with its citizens of the community to preserve the character and style of the neighborhoods. These bills will not only take away the uniform character of the neighborhoods, but they will also remove safeguards for housing standards. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Emily. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the resolution opposing these two bills?
Move to approve the resolution opposing House Bill 55 and Senate Bill 284.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no- No. Resolution is adopted. See, you did great, there was no reason to be nervous, I told you would do fine. Mr. Shon said you would do good, and you did, so. All right, council business, any council business? We want to talk about the color of paint in the CRA tonight?
I do, I, I, no joke, you look around and everything is the same color. Did we set that as our only color?
There's a palette, right? You can select from the palette.
What, like gray, light gray, but it's not gray, it's like tan, darker tan, lighter tan, is that it?
Palette in the code that they can follow.
That's what I see all the time.
Yeah, but I'm not colorblind.
All right, there's a palette in the code, right?
Yes, sir.
I thought there was.
I mean, we, we don't, we don't, we try not to micromanage their color, and I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I'm at the corner of 56th and Bush, and everything is the same color, all four corners.
Okay, well.
So I just want that said, I'm okay.
You can look at the palette, get the palette from Mr. Stevenson, and if you don't like the palette, then put it on the.
I mean, I agree, I don't want something, I don't want somebody to buy a navy blue building. I'm just, I just wondered if it was much gradation of that palette, doesn't appear to be.
Okay.
Maybe we're having a big sale on a certain color.
All right. Mr. Chambers.
Another item, if we're done with colors, okay.
Council business, yes, sir.
Thank you. Tonight, tonight was mentioned about the DRC. And I know what the DRC is, Development Review Committee, and how it works, I've been on that. And, but, maybe everybody doesn't know that, so I don't know if there's a need for us to have a briefing of what the DRC is, who's on it, what they look for, what their parameters are when they review all these developments or all these things that come in. I don't know if there's a need for that, but I was just sitting here thinking that maybe people at home, when you say DRC, they don't know what that means, or what it does. So, just, I, I'm not going to give you work unless council agrees that we need to, that might want to.
Well, I can, why don't you put it in a soundbite? I could do it, and I'm sure you could do it too. You want to just tell the public what that is? Can you, can, is that something you can do in a minute or so?
I, I can, well, that, it's a group of the department heads, usually department heads, or members of their staff, that review every development that comes before, before it gets to us, for things like, and in parks and recreation, the number of new additions to residents, how much open space there is, is, it kicks to different thresholds. And I know police, fire, community development, public works, am I missing any of them? They, engineering, they review all these in advance of it, before it comes to council. So when staff says the DRC's looked at it, they have looked at it for all those parameters on, do we need more officers, do we need more firefighters, open space, things like that, so. It's reviewed very extensively at the city level, by all depart, all the department heads.
That was a good explanation, I appreciate you bringing that up, because you're right, a lot of people probably don't know that, so.
Well, and, and I think we should be mindful of when we speak in code, that people don't know what that is, and that, that, that would have been, one of us should have said, by the way, that is. And I think at that point, that's when somebody should be able to jump in and say, just to let you know, rather than wait till the end of the meeting, when it would have answered a question that were asked, so.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Any other council business, carryover council business, anything? New business in board reports? New business, board reports, anything new? City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple things real quick. At our last meeting, I had mentioned to council that we had hired a city attorney, and Mr. Brian McCarthy.
Engineer.
You didn't hire a new city attorney, don't make Mr. Shon faint.
City engineer.
You said attorney.
Not the attorney, the attorney. I'm thinking DRC. You, you got me thinking DRC now. I am sorry, Pam. We, we have not hired a new city attorney. A city engineer, I'm sorry. Mr. Brian McCarthy, who is here. Brian would come up, and I just wanted to introduce Brian to you. And Brian has been here three weeks. And still keeps coming back, we haven't run him off yet. But we have a lot of work for Brian to do, and he's getting acclimated fairly quickly, so. Brian, if you want to say a few words?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, I'm very glad to be here. Most of my experience has been in, working for the state of Florida, as well as on the private side, mostly doing stormwater engineering, so that's mainly my background. I'm also an Air Force veteran, before going back to school to get my engineering degree. Yeah, I'm just really looking forward to being here, looking at improving my engineering skills as well.
Very good, well, we're thrilled to have you aboard, so thank you very much. And sorry you had to.
You're favorite color.
Sorry you had to stick around so long to get up here tonight.
Oh, come on, baptism by fire.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Did that on purpose.
Yeah.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor and council, kudos to the mobile vaccine unit today. We had a chance, I had a chance to go out there at lunchtime and see their operation. Obviously, the county, we found out late Friday that it was our turn, and they told us they'd give us three or four days, and they did. Thanks to FEMA, the county, the state, it was well-run, well-organized, we had no issues. Special thanks to Leisure Services and Fire Department, Police Department. Every, every department provided help out there. We had no incidences, and it was very well-run, so, thanks to all involved. Maybe we can get another one going here soon, so, thank you.
Anything else? City Attorney.
The transportation surtax case. The parties had finally agreed on a proposed final judgment in this case that is going, it was remanded by the Supreme Court back to the Circuit Court here in Tampa. And Judge Barbis was tasked with entering the final judgment, and a motion for supplemental relief was filed by the defendants. That involved, what do we do, and what do we do with the money? Where does it go? How does it get returned if that happens? And there was some pushback there on the motion, but the judge did grant that, and so, what I'm expecting the judge to sign is something in which he retains jurisdiction to resolve a motion for costs filed by the plaintiffs, if, if everyone can't agree on that. But as you recall, I had filed a motion to have us dismissed from the case because we would have done whatever the judge said to do, and we didn't have some big disagreement with the plaintiff, we were kind of just brought along. And because we were dismissed, I'm hoping that means that we're not going to share in having to pay any of the costs. The, the other thing, the other part of it is, is that the court is going to retain jurisdiction to consider any pending motions involved in how do, what is the procedure for the return of the money? Fortunately, I've been told that we did not spend a penny of it, so it's all there, so it's not going to be, I don't mean in budget to use it for anything, and so it should not be any type of a burden in giving it back. The goal question, though, is what happens to the parts that aren't given back? I can't answer that yet, I don't know, but as soon as I find out, I'll let you know. Let's see, in addition, not the transportation surtax, but Creative Pyrotechnics. Creative Pyrotechnics was a company that we had hired probably two years ago, three? I've kind of lost track now. And delivered a rather substandard performance at our 4th of July. The owner had offered to give us a refund of the money, and made one payment on that. We sued, we sued Creative Pyrotechnics and the owner individually. The court eventually, not too long ago, granted us a final judgment against both of them. Creative Pyrotechnics had filed for bankruptcy, it just doesn't exist anymore. However, we did get a judgment against the owner himself. Whether we're able to ever collect on that remains to be seen, but we do have a judgment out there, and we recorded that judgment today. So, he'll be running into that, hopefully, during the next 15 years of his life. So, there were a lot of cities, there were a lot of other cities that were in the same boat as we were concerning this particular company. We were not the only ones, so.
I just want to comment on that, and I, I don't want to share our city attorney's legal tactics and strategies, but I have to tell you that I know how this judgment came about. And it's an amazing feat of our city attorney, this did not fall in our lap, I can tell you. And, and she was very clever and persistent in her pursuit of recovering this money. Now, we have a judgment, I don't know if we'll get any money, but, but we are very, the only reason we have a judgment is because of the tenacity and cleverness of our attorney, I can tell you. So, good job, Mr. Sisler.
Just as a point of reference on the transportation tax, it's, it's now sales tax time, return, sales tax return filing time for the resident, for the, the businesses in Hillsborough County. And they're going to find out that the state never changed the tax return. So if you file electronically, you're still collecting 2.5%. Let me rephrase that, you're still remitting 2.5% irrespective of what you've collected since the, the Department of Revenue made their change. On or about the 15th of February, of March, where they actually told people to stop collecting, that's going to be a real problem coming forward, because the businesses still have to remit the full 2.5% through the end of March. They gave no mechanism to delineate between the, on the change of, when, when they issued the order to stop collecting the 1%.
And, and people should keep an eye on their receipts when they purchase something to make sure that the right amount of tax is being collected. And it might not matter on something small, but if you're buying a big-ticket item, it can add up. And all of the, all of the merchants were supposed to be notified, but that's a huge task for the Department of Revenue to do.
Anything else, Ms. Shon? I have one thing real quick to report, and it's a good thing. Most of us know, most of the residents watching will know, this, the crossing guard that Gillette and White Way, she's been here a long time, I don't know how long. He's been, I mean, he's just a wonderful, wonderful guy, he always waves and talks to everybody. I mean, he's, he's the most community-oriented crossing guard. And I got a email from a resident, it's not the first time, but I've gotten, I got an email from saying, you know, they don't know who he works for, I guess they assume he works for the city, he works for the sheriff's office. And so I called the sheriff about it, and I said, you know, we, this guy is just, I hear about him all the time in the community, he's wonderful, I want to give him some recognition. And so the sheriff took our comments and gave him a commendation at the sheriff's office.
That's good.
Yeah, it was good, it was good, so. And that's all I have, and is there any other business, Mr. Stevenson? Madam Clerk? City Attorney, staff? Diehard citizens that are still here? Okay, very good, if not, we're adjourned.